Are we ready? I'd like to call the meeting in order. For those of you that care to, please stand for an opening prayer and a salute to flag. Joining us, we have Pastor Destiny Church. If you would lead us, please.
Father, we thank you for this time together. Thank you for these men and these women that help direct our city. Praise you continue to be with Republic, lots of us give our city a favor. We thank you, Jesus, for directing this meeting tonight in your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And thank you. Mayor's announcements. We have chat with the chief scheduled for Tuesday, November 17th, from 7:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at Ruby Tuesday. Chief, do you have anything you'd like to say on that subject?
Sure. Hopefully, I can get some more people out to this one than the first one, but the intent of these is to provide access to the public, to the chief, talk about any topic they wish to talk about. Nothing is sacred. They're welcome to come on in. This is from 7:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Trying an evening to see if that helps get some people out there. They stop in for a minute, stop in for 10 minutes, stop in for an hour, whatever it takes, to answer their questions and get the conversation going. And we'll be doing that again every month, and I have a chat with the chief scheduled in December for Walmart, in the entryway to Walmart, and I'll have some times in the next few days on that. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. Are you providing appetizers for that or just now?
No appetizers.
Also, this Wednesday, Happy Veterans Day to all the veterans out there. This Wednesday is Veterans Day, so when you're out there in the public eye, thank a veteran. Oh, no public hearing. On to citizen participation. Anybody that has anything they'd like to say that is not on the agenda, please step forward, sign in, and give us your best three minutes.
Go ahead. I may need more than three. Go for it.
And please don't forget to sign in. Thank you. Is there any sign up there?
Yes.
Absolutely. Okay.
Mayor, members of City Council, I'm Doug Boatright. I live at 416 Alexander here in Republic, and it has been a few years since I've stood on this side of the podium. I come to you tonight about a problem that needs council to address, but hopefully it can get addressed at the council level before it becomes a problem and it goes into the next step. Talking about a very vague noise ordinance and a peace disturbance ordinance.
How about that? Do I need to repeat?
No, you're fine.
Okay. I attend Destiny Church on Harrison Street. We're zoned in a commercial area, as in a few other churches are zoned commercial, but the bulk of the churches in Republic are in residential areas with R1 on all four sides. We have R1 on one side, but we have a highway, a fire station, a helicopter landing pad, a football stadium, railroad tracks, a Vili Gin, Hedy's BBQ, everything surrounds us, like a lot of the other churches in town. We try to be good neighbors. We try to follow all of the ordinances that the city has, but we are getting calls on for being too loud on Sunday morning for Wednesday night services. We have the police come out investigating a noise complaint, and you know, it's really up to, the ordinance way it's written is up to the individual officer to determine whether it's a complaint or not. I don't really know how we can follow the law as it's written because it's up to the individual officer or the individual that thinks that they're being, they've got a noise complaint. There's no set hours and no set level. This can happen to one church, it can happen to all the churches. I mean, if we were 3:00 in the morning, yeah, write us a ticket, we need to be ticketed for that. But Sunday morning, Wednesday night, those are times you expect people to be coming and going. What's happening now is it's not, be clear, we're not blaming anyone in the city, not the chief, not any of the officers, they've all been extremely professional, everyone is following the ordinance that the city has, but we need to have something to give the police direction so that we don't have a pastor handcuffed, hauled out during a service because of a noise complaint. We really don't want to be on the front page of the Wall Street Journal or New York Times or have Fox News here. Believe me, I know, I've been there, done that, had to get rid of the T-shirt. So, you know, hopefully, we can get this resolved. If not, and it goes to the next level where someone is actually cited and is ticketed and charged with a peace disturbance, it's going to look really bad pulling someone out during a church service and giving them a ticket. Hopefully, the board can come up with something that will exempt churches, allow a little bit of noise during a church service, instead of just a blatant, "No, if you're offending us with your noise, you need to stop it." Thank you.
I have a question.
Go right ahead.
Has anything changed in, have you put in a new sound system or added new instruments or done anything different in the last, say, six months or a year that you have in the long haul?
I've been going there about four, maybe five years, and as far as I can tell, nothing like that has changed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boatright.
Members, my name is Eric Burleson. I'm a state representative for the 133rd District. I serve western Springfield area, some of Green County and the city of Battlefield, and I'm here because I attend Destiny Church. I love Destiny Church. I love the community of Republic. My wife and I, we do, we found ourselves doing a lot more activities in Republic because of Destiny Church, and we're not alone. There's a lot of people that make their way out of Springfield every Sunday and Wednesday because of the great thing that you've got going on at Destiny Church. And so, when this issue was, when I heard about this issue, I was a little bit concerned and really thought it was very interesting as a concept as a state legislator, this issue of property rights and thought, I understand your role as well, being a lawmaker. I receive complaints from constituents and try to find a way to address them, but in doing a little bit of research, as you do address this, my advice would be to try to address this issue with a letter or some guidance on the existing statutes or existing ordinance that you have, may be able to address the situation as opposed to drafting a new ordinance. What I can tell you is that if you do just quick research, you'll find that as cities have tried to address noise ordinances, if you get very specific, you will find yourself in a lawsuit, and that, and it doesn't take much research to see that if you try to get narrow on hours of the day, or decimal levels, or the content that can be done, then you quickly end up having the ACLU call you. So, it's not a role that I envy, I do not envy your role in this, but I do think that it's something that could be addressed with trying to provide clarity from your level in the form of a letter or some kind of intent on how you feel that your existing ordinance should be applied in these situations. Also, I wanted to provide myself and make myself available. If you think that at the state level, that there needs to be any clarity for you, or anything that you need, any guidance or help from the state level, I wanted to make myself available as well. I did this last weekend go and stand at the constituents' home, or in front of their home during the time of day in which worship was going on, and I recorded that audio, and what you will hear from my recording, and it was just from my cellphone, is you'll hear dogs barking, you can hear a lot of other neighborhood ambient noise, and I don't know if you can even pick up the sounds of the church, but I would encourage any of you to, if you have time to, if this becomes an issue, that you could do that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burleson.
Hi. My name is Daisy Smith, and I'm a resident of Republic. I've been here a long time, raised my children here, and I'm coming to council with a problem with my home, and I'm hoping that you guys can help me out with. I'll keep some of these out. I purchased my home in 1999 in Republic, and I raised my two children there as a single mom. In 2004, my sewer flooded. It flooded my home, it flooded into my bathroom. I ended up having to replace the entire bathroom floor, all the tile. The line has no fault in it, and so they came out and they dug up that entire line and in 2004 dug the entire line up all the way down to the main sewer line you can see from the home all the way back. It's about 85, 90 feet, and at that time, they said, "You don't have enough fall." And the city came out and everybody kind of looked at it and everybody kind of shook their head and said, "You know, boy, you got a problem." And so, they kind of put it all back together again, and the city said, "Well, nothing I can do about it." And so, they basically gave me enough to just barely get down that line, and I had my home and back to normal, except we had to flush that line every six to nine months, which is pretty expensive, and I continued doing that. Well, in 2015, just a couple weeks ago, that line stopped up to the point where it couldn't be flushed again, and they did the camera down there, and they said, "We have to dig it all up again." And so, they dug it all up again, and this time, the city came back out and they said, "You know, you don't have enough fall." I said, "I know that. We've been through this before." And they said, "Well, you're going to have to install a pump." "Okay, I have to install a pump. How come this wasn't told to me when we bought the home? How come this has been going on all this time and nobody said anything?" So, they said, "Well, back in 2004, nobody approved sewer lines." I said, "That can't possibly be true, because if that were the case, why wouldn't you just run your sewer out to the sinkhole and make it a lagoon? I mean, that doesn't make any sense. You guys, when you do go out and prove, you approve a homeowner and you improve that house." In fact, I'm looking today at the regulations today, revised in 2012, there's 70 pages, and we go through everything from how far Joyce can be apart to where the groundwater goes off and all the rest of it, so I know that you guys looked at it back then. In fact, my father was a builder before he passed away, and in 2003, when he was building, he went out of business then, but there was another property where he had to install a pump at the city's request. So, I do know that at some point, somebody kind of turned their head and said, "We're just going to let this one go," and it wasn't okay. When you issue a building permit and you issue occupancy permit, that homeowner's relying on that, they're saying, "You guys, you did your due diligence, and it's okay to live there." But the way it is, it is not okay to live there, and for me to have to endure that expense is not okay. Back then, we could have gone against the builder. We can't do that now, and so I'm stuck with this expense because it wasn't looked at. The depth of the sewer back by my house is only four feet deep at the end of my house. If you go down a little ways, it's eight feet deep, it's dug, because you have to have a fall. Well, the old adage is kind of true, poop doesn't roll, poop rolls downhill, and in my case, my house is downhill from the sewer, and that four feet drop isn't really necessary, it is what it is, but at that point, when somebody came out and looked at that home when it was being built, you stood on a hill and looked down at the house. You had to know, anybody with any common sense had to know, that wasn't going to work, and so as a homeowner, I don't think I should have to bear that expense. That's kind of where I stand here. I've got pictures for you and the latest bill as well. That's a recent dig up. I guess what I'm asking, council, it's the right thing to do to not have me bear this expense? Again, if I had an opportunity to go against the builder, the time to do that would have been the time that we issued the occupancy permit and the time we issued the building permit. It shouldn't be now, and I shouldn't have to do it twice.
Mr. Bill, thank you for the visuals.
I have one question.
Yes, Charles.
Do you have an estimate on what it costs to install?
That very last bill right there is $5,030. That does not include the electric, which they're going to come out and still do, apparently has to run on its own dedicated line, and then, so that's going to be another 300 to 500 is what they told me. The other thing is, is it's really impacted the value of my home. I can't resell that home without disposing that, so you've impacted the value of my house with that. That pump will only last 10 to 15 years, so in 10 to 15 years, it has to be dug up and replaced again, so I'm facing that again in 10, 15 years.
What is the cost to flush your lines?
To flush the lines, every time I had to flush it, it depended on which plumber I called and whether it happened on a Saturday or a Sunday. So, it would run me about, 75 when it was Bob plumbing, and all clear was 179, so it depended on which plumber and again, whether it was a weekend or not, but thank you.
Did you buy the house new?
I bought the house brand new, yes, sir. It was my first homeownership, and as a single mom, I was quite proud of that.
I will give you just one maybe positive for down the road if you do get the lift. I have a lift pump in my basement because it needs to be pushed up high enough because mine's down low, probably like yours should have been built. And once you get it, they work great, there isn't, there's no maintenance to it, so if you get to that point, it'll be good for you. I'm sorry you weren't given that at the beginning.
Yeah, me too. Now, they did say that there's an alarm system that's on that so that it goes off. My worry is if we have an ice storm and we're down without power for three, four days, that might be a problem.
At my house, there's, it's the basement and certain side of the house go out through the lift, and there's one restroom that's towards the front of the house that can go out, and it drops down and it's going out high on that side of the house, so I can use that one if I have no power. But the other ones that all go through the lift, I know I can't. I can maybe do a few flushes, but it only has a couple gallons of a tank down there.
Yeah, that's, and again, I'm at the very end of the sewer line, so every neighbor is tied in a lot where it's deeper in the sewer line. I am not, I'm at the very end.
Sure, that's what I love to do.
And again, if somebody would just have stood there, like, "How did you guys miss this? It just shouldn't have happened."
Well, I was worried about having a lift. I've never had one of those before, and once you get to that point, that won't hurt your value once you get it to that point, but thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Bill, but we will be looking into this, I promise you. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak about anything not on the agenda? Seeing none, citizen participation is closed. I need a motion to second for the approval of consent agenda.
Motion.
A motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions?
I'm going to stay.
One abstention. Motion carries. On to financial report. Welcome, Mr. Donaldson.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I trust everyone got their financial packets. I just have a few brief remarks. Excuse me. As was brought up at our budget meetings last Monday and Tuesday evenings, we revised the format of at least one of our financial reports that we prepare every month, and that's the unrestricted cash report. You'll see that we've added on a little section that breaks down our total cash by funds into not just unrestricted, but also showing restricted amounts as well. The purpose of this, based on questions at budget, was to give council an idea exactly what we had in reserves for each of our funds, to assure that if there's a major project or an act of God that takes place where we need to depend upon those reserves, we have them available. So, that has been, that has been added on, and we'll see that ongoing. Our cash did go down a little bit in October. There were a couple of one-time events that did, that played into that, including a $78,000 semi-annual interest payment on our 2010 bond issue, and the fact that October is one of two months in the year where we have three payrolls, so about additional $284,000 in payroll expenses, so that was attributable to the difference in cash. Other than that, our revenues and expenses, that too also impacted there as well. However, we are still well ahead of last year's pace, so I think we will probably do quite well by the end of the year. As for sales taxes, I am still collecting that information, and at the next council meeting, I will provide a full report on our sales tax collected for the month of October. And with that, questions?
Any questions for Mr. Donaldson? No questions. Can council just review this, look over this? If you have any questions, get with Mr. Donaldson. Need a motion to second to approve the financial report?
Motion.
A motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Reports and staff, you're it.
No running.
Not a thing. On to future community events, Mr. Keeling.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for showing up, so I didn't have to read this.
Quite welcome. Future community events for the remainder of November. This coming Tuesday and Thursday is OrthoRitas Foundation Exercise Program that's held at the Republic Community Center at 1:30 p.m. This coming Wednesday, in honor of Veterans Day, city offices will be closed. November 16th, 23rd, and 30th, those are Mondays, we offer toddler open gym that's 10:00 a.m. held at the Republic Activities Building. November 17th is the aforementioned Chat with the Chief at 7:00 p.m. at Ruby Tuesday. November 19th is Senior Movie Day, it's held at the Republican Community Center at 3:00 p.m. The movie is Little Boy, 2015 movie. November 20th is the last date of register for our youth boys basketball program that's for grades K through 6. The season begins on January the 2nd. November 20th is also the last date of register for Pee Wee Hoops, that's for ages four and five-year-olds, and once again, the season begins on January the 2nd. Saturday, November 21st is the Kiwanis Christmas Parade. On November 25th, we offer a Schools Out program that's from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. for kids in kindergarten through grade 12. Christmas parade's on there twice. Same parade.
Show up. Did everybody show up?
Exactly. November 26th and 27th, city offices will be closed in honor of Thanksgiving. November 30th through December 31st is registration for our youth girls winter volleyball program that's for girls in grades 3 through 8, actually, that's for girls and boys in grades 3 through 8. November 30th is the deadline to order bricks for the Republic Veterans Memorial. All those bricks ordered by November 30th this year will be placed in the memorial in spring of 2016.
Mr. Keeling.
Thanks, sir.
On the board commission and committee schedule, Board of Justice, December 3rd. Capital Improvements Committee has been canceled for November 25th. City Council meeting, November 23rd. City Council meeting, December 14th. Planning and zoning commission, commission, November 16th. On the old business and table item, I need a motion to second to read bill number 15-28.
Motion.
Have a motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions?
In the ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, authorizing and directing the city administrator of the City of Republic, Missouri, to enter into an agreement with the City of Springfield for the acquisition of pictometry, providing a more accurate geographical information system.
I need a motion to second for the final passage of bill number 15-28.
Motion to second.
And Mr. Tyson.
Thank you. This bill will enter us into an agreement with the City of Springfield for the cooperative purchase of a product that is called pictometry. Pictometry is essentially a package of what's called orthophotography, but it's basically just the aerial images that we use in the maps that we have on our offices that we will hopefully soon be able to also publish on our website, and also, we use them frequently. You see them in the maps that come along with the exhibits that we distribute to council. The cost of this, Republic's share of the cost is just a little bit over 3,700, but for cooperating in the purchase, we will not only get the imagery that covers the city of Republic, but we will also get all of the imagery that's being taken for both Green and Christian counties.
Thank you, Mr. Tyson. Any questions for Mr. Tyson? This is budgeted, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Tyson? No questions?
So, why is our price per tile so much better than the next's price?
We have more partners for our tiles, so we get to split the cost of our tiles up between more entities than they do. More people are interested in Republic apparently.
I wasn't happy about that.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. No other questions? We'll call them.
Councilmember Harrison?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Brashear?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Clinkey Bear?
Aye.
Motion carries, 7-0. On to new business, I need a motion to second for the first reading of bill number 15-29.
Motion.
A motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
In the ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, approving the sale of a portion 23.95 acres of Brookline Park to the City of Springfield, Missouri, Board of Public Utilities, as a side of a proposed new substation, and to authorize the city administrator to execute the real estate purchase agreement for said transaction.
Thank you, Brenda. And on to Mr. Keeling, you.
Thanks, sir. First of all, I'd like to introduce Kyle McClear for City Utilities to just here to answer any questions you may have after I'm done giving the spiel.
Thank you.
We were first approached by City Utilities early this summer of their interest in possibly locating a future substation in land we own and known as Brookline Park. We've kept council up to date with those meetings and transpiring with those meetings from then on. Happy to bring the proposal we have to you this evening. I believe it's fair and just. We'll go over the details of everything we've talked about and discussed, and ultimately, everything we talked about in the meetings we came to you, came to fruition. They've been very good to work with, very appreciative of Kyle and his staff, really, where the negotiations went very, very well. The purchase of land is for 23.95 acres of Brookline Park. We own 40 acres known as Brookline Park out there. It's important to note of the 23.95 acres, though, the C U will actually be only using approximately eight to 10 acres of that. In a lease agreement, and actually, two different lease agreements that we'll bring to you at next meeting, we will still retain use of the property that they're not using. That was very important to us in our negotiations. The end result is they'll probably be using anywhere from eight to 12 acres of the property that they're buying, the 23.95, and we'll still retain usage of the other portion of that property. Mainly, for our part, we'll be locating trails on there and would use that property for special events. A little history of Brookline Park. We first purchased Brookline Park really in a three-way transaction, but we ended up buying it from Jury in 2009. When we consolidated with Brookline in 2006, we were looking for a smaller partial property to locate a park that was part of the construction. partial property, uh, to locate a park that was part of the consolidation agreement. Uh, this ended up, uh, through a three-way deal with McLean, Jury, and us, ended up coming to us. We were happy to get the land and we made really good use out of the land so far, unless you guys have been out there lately, but ongoing development and it's really becoming, uh, one of our best parks we have. It's a natural park, more of a natural park than we had within the, the formal city that, uh, that we used to have prior to the consolidation, but very, very happy with the progress we've made out there. Uh, we purchased that land, uh, at a price of ten thousand dollars an acre or for four-hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we put a hundred thousand dollars down at the time and refinanced the remaining three-hundred thousand over ten years for thirty thousand dollars a year. Uh, to date, we've paid two-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars towards that four-hundred dollars, four-hundred thousand dollar purchase price. We still owe a hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars to Jury. CU has proposed to buy twenty-three point nine-five acres. Uh, that's, uh, all of the land really on the south end of the property. Uh, they had the property formally appraised and appraised at seven thousand eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars per acre. Uh, that would put the purchase price at a hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand dollars. Once again, they are only, uh, proposing to use eighty acres of the land. We also, uh, we, we need, we're in need of a fence for the property, uh, have been for a while. Uh, we first approached them about constructing a fence as part of the deal along Farm Road ninety-seven. Uh, they said for us to go out and pick what kind of fence we would like. Uh, we did our diligence on that, really tried to get the best fence we could get for security, aesthetics, and everything else that goes along with the park. We ultimately chose a, uh, very nice post and rail type fence. The, the fence has been installed recently at Barbara Plumbing and is in front of Carnahan White today. I would consider it a top-of-the-line fence. Looking, if we went to purchase it somewhere around nineteen to twenty-one dollars per linear foot, we went back to City Utilities, they had absolutely no problem with that and, and in turn, they volunteered to go ahead and fence the remaining portion of the property that fronts Sawyer Road. Very happy with that. We took a small amount off of our easement price, which we'll get to in a minute, um, but very happy with the way that went. And I think once that fence gets installed out there, it will really, really set that park off. It's a wonderful-looking fence to go along with a natural park property like Brookline Park. Other things including in the negotiation were, uh, really not technically included, but they're gonna do, because they have to do it for their substation, is site work and land balancing. If you remember, uh, we requested a tremendous amount of dirt from the McLean project to balance that land out there. As you're aware, that, that dirt is still out there today. Uh, that is a tremendous expense. Um, we, we intended to do it all alone, but that's funds became available. Uh, they're actually locating their substation and propose additional, uh, additional part of their substation right on that, so they'll be doing that land balancing as part of their project. Uh, I can assure you, that is not a cheap thing to do. Also, a driveway cut and driveway off of Farm Road ninety-seven. We have one now, that's a temporary, but they will formalize that driveway cut off of ninety-seven, install a driveway, uh, throughout the south part of the property. And finally, is a provision for future light poles. Um, this is at our discretion if we decide to do it. Ultimately, we don't even know if we're gonna do it yet, but, uh, if we decide one day to put some sort of, um, athletic fields out there, multipurpose athletic fields, they have agreed to install, uh, eight electrical light posts, light posts at no cost. Uh, I believe that's all the rundown of it. Uh, entertain any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Keeling.
Thanks, sir.
Again, we did promise the park to Brookline and this is the park, it's a very nice park and I think what's gonna be happening here will be enhancing that park even more, so... Any questions for Mr. Keeling? Yes, to Mr. Brishers, please.
Yeah, to Jury about the land being, um, leased out to the city.
Correct.
What's the terms on the, for the years?
Uh, it's ninety-nine-year lease and those, we couldn't bring those tonight to you, Charlie, just because this has to go formal before we bring those leases to you, but a ninety-nine-year light lease at no, no cost. And very little provisions on there as far as what we can and cannot do as far as special events and things like that. Uh, they were very liberal and very agreeable to what, to what we suggested, so...
Mr. Clinkey Bear, did you have something?
Yeah, the fencing, is that gonna be like similar to what, like Rutledge-Wilson has along the roadway in front of them, if you're familiar with that?
That, I believe Russell Wis-, Russell, what, Rutledge-Wilson, thank you, I couldn't get that out of my mouth. I believe that's vinyl, if I'm not, if I remember right, white vinyl. The, the picture on the, you might not be able to see it very good, Jeff, uh, just because the picture's so small, but the, the fence type is copperwood fence. If, I don't know if that resonates with anybody, but that's the top of the line as you can get. And, uh, as far as security and looks, I really, really think it's what we need to go with out there.
Okay.
Uh, far better, as we talked with them, they absolutely love it. The fence in front of Carnahan White's been there eleven years and it, it still looks really, really good. Uh, Wayne Hawkins, who is our parking facility maintenance superintendent, he did a lot of research on that and he just ultimately decided this is the direction we needed to go.
Excellent. And by the picture, it is a good-looking fence, so...
Long-term, long-term, very low maintenance and that's what they're most interested in, so...
Any other questions for Mr. Keeling? Good job.
Thanks, sir.
And this is the first read, so if you have any questions, please contact Mr. Keeling. Thank you, sir. I need a motion to second for the first reading of bill number one-five dash three-oh.
Motion.
I have a motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
In the ordinance of the city council of the city of Republic, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to execute an easement to benefit the city of Springfield, Missouri Board of Public Utilities for utility lines across Brookline Park.
Thank you, Brenda. And Mr. Keeling is back.
Go along with-
Did you even go back to sit down or you, you didn't go down?
No, no, just say to her the whole thing.
Okay. That's efficient.
To go along with the previous agenda item and also on your last page of the handout I gave to you, I just wanted to make sure I gave that to you as a point of reference. Um, the portion of the, the park that doesn't front Farm Road ninety-seven that CU is not, would not potentially acquire, uh, the portion that we would still own, they would need a utility easement across that portion of land for their, uh, future utility lines. Um, the compensation value for this, uh, although it came in slightly more than five thousand, they, we went down to five thousand in, in, in agreement for the type of fence that we suggested. So, um, would highly recommend that we grant them the formal easement.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Keeling? Yes, to Mr. Brishers.
Um, I know we talked about it before, is there any restriction on how high-capacity the lines can get? I know there's, we talked about several different numbers and things, I don't know where all of them are, but is anything in that for running across that area?
I might defer that, Mr. Brishers.
Sir, is that, that will be what we call a one-sixty-one line and it won't go any higher. It won't become a three-forty-five like you may see in other parts of that area where there's two problems. This will be steel metal poles that will go approximately eighty to a hundred feet in the air and, but they will, it will not go to a higher voltage level. This will be a, the main line as we go from J-Tech all the way up the thirteen-mile path to, uh, Pick West, the industrial park there, but obviously, we're anticipating future growth, growth, load growth in this area and we want to make sure that as, as these come into, uh, the growth continues here in the next ten to fifteen to twenty years that we have the infrastructure to cover that growth.
Sure. Is that in writing that it only goes up to that level? I mean, once, just like any type of zoning or when we make a decision on something, um, if you don't have it down in writing, then it can all, you know, ten years from now, someone else can come in here and change, change it and we don't have any say in it.
It's, it's not that type of line. It wouldn't become a three-forty-five, it would not be used at the same, this is more for distribution and not for, for long-term, uh, distance transmission.
So the other types of lines wouldn't be able to use at this type of a substation anyway?
Correct, correct.
Gotcha. Thank you for the clarification, yes.
And you did say you, that it would be eighty to a hundred feet tall, is that correct?
Yes, the, the, the poles will be that, uh, usual, it just depends on how far you've gotta go down in the ground and so on.
And, uh, airport's been contacted.
Yes, we, we, that was one of the reasons for the path that, when we started this process over a year and a half ago, uh, the study and the, we had to stay away from the airport because obviously there are FAA rules that we have to abide by and they, they don't like a lot of power lines and those types of things near-
They don't like obstacle courses?
Correct, correct.
I don't know why. Thank you.
Have fun out there.
Any other questions for Mr. Keeling? Again, this is a first read, so if you do have any questions, please contact Mr. Keeling.
Thank you.
Or Mr. Christian, if he ever comes back.
See somewhere that good?
I need a motion to second for the first reading of bill number one-five dash three-one.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
In the ordinance of the city council of the city of Republic, Missouri, authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental cooperative agreement with Green County for road striping services.
Thank you, Brenda. Mr. Brock?
Thank you, sir. Um, after we do our resurfacing projects, we have a need to re-stripe roadways. Uh, this will be the second year that we've utilized the Green County Highway through a formal agreement. Uh, they've been, uh, very easy to work with as far as, uh, timeliness and, uh, the, their charges per linear foot are about a half of what we might obtain if we, uh, were to bid this out again, or bid this out to independent businesses. Um, this was a project that we completed this year. Uh, the agreement is specific to Farm Road one-fifteen. I don't know if you saw the, uh, the, the area that, uh, we repaved, but this agreement pertains only to that, uh, restriping that was done.
Thank you, Mr. Brock. Any questions for Mr. Brock? Nothing on the striping? Again, this is the first read, so if you do have any questions, please contact Mr. Brock or Mr. Christian.
Thank you.
Thank you. On to, on to other business. Resolution number one-five dash R dash seven-two, the resolution of the city council of the city of Republic, Missouri, authorizing the execution of a license agreement between the city of Republic and Lester E. Cox Medical Centers for the purpose of continued operations of Cox Fitness Center Republic located within Republic Community Center. I need a motion and a second.
Motion.
The overview by Mr. Keeling, welcome back.
Certainly. Our current lights agreement, uh, with Cox Fitness Centers expires on, uh, the latter four of November, November twenty-third. Uh, this, uh, this agreement, it's a three-year agreement, it's identical to the one we signed in two thousand and twelve. Uh, as you, you guys may have recalled, they have been with us since we opened our doors in October of two thousand and three. Really do an outstanding job. Uh, a terrific partner, a community partner as well. Uh, in the past, we've entertained the ideas from, uh, entertained proposals from Mercy St. John's. Uh, they've all but pulled out of the fitness center business. They closed their, uh, fitness center there on South Campbell. Uh, they've recently pulled out of Nix a couple, three years ago, so we really don't even have a competing thing to bring to you tonight. I can tell you though, that the, what we receive from Cox is compared to everyone else in the business, uh, is very, very good. However, uh, it's, it's not outlandish. Uh, it is where it needs to be. Uh, as you can imagine, they do consume a large number of utilities, especially in the summer when they're keeping it sixty-eight in there, a hundred degrees out, but, uh, they're a very good tenant, run a state-of-the-art professional, uh, fitness center. I would shudder to think if they've ever left us the amount of money, we'd have to put right in there immediately for equipment and staffing, um, and plus we have a quite a learning curve there too. So we want to keep them happy, vice versa, uh, we've been very happy with them. Uh, I would definitely recommend this agreement. The amount of, uh, rent we see, received from them annually is currently at one-oh-nine-two-seven-two. Uh, that amount was, stayed the same for the year one and year two, and increased by three percent in year three of this agreement.
Pretty good. Thank you, Mr. Keeling. Any questions for Mr. Keeling? So in the future, you'll try to let more bids or is this kind of-
Really, there's two players in the game and one of them fell out of the game. So we are down to them, however, I can tell you that they are by far the best in the industry, by far. They have, at last council, are around thirteen-hundred-plus members here. Um, been here eleven years and I've, and honestly, I've never received one complaint, so that tells almost everything you need to know.
Yeah, county parking.
Clean, I'm sorry?
Yeah, county parking.
Other than parking. Yeah, no, no, just kidding. Actually, we create a lot of their parking problems.